Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the City Council Regular Meeting for the City of Warrenville for April 1st, 2019. May I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Ashauer.
Here.
Alderman Berry.
Here.
Alderman Bavir.
Here.
Alderman Davalos.
Here.
Alderman Goodman.
Here.
Alderman Hoffman.
Here.
Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Alderman Widener will be late.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Emily. Would you please stand as you are able and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands our nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I can do this. We are blessed with many, many good volunteers for the city, and we appreciate them very much because we would not be able to do the excellent job that we do in providing services for our town without the help of volunteers. Every once in a while, a volunteer finds that life has overtaken them and they have to go on to other pursuits. That's the case this evening for one of our valued Plan Commission members, Suzanne Batista. Come on up, Suzanne, who's been with us for eight years, which is pretty remarkable and quite a, quite a nice thing. Come right up and take a picture. It's great. Yeah, you don't have to be shy.
I brought him with me.
You can hold that. We'll get this out of the way. All right. Certificate of Appreciation is hereby awarded to Suzanne Batista for valuable volunteer service to the City of Warrenville Plan Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals and citizens of Warrenville. Thank you for your exemplary service and dedication for the past eight years, September 19, 2011 to March 2019. Suzanne, thank you so much.
Thank you.
This is for you.
No, just thank you for the opportunity. It's been an honor, and Warrenville is in great hands.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a couple of proclamations this evening also, and Alderman Davalos will receive these proclamations, both of them, one for Earth Day and one for Arbor Day. And if you'd like to just stay there, that's fine. I'll bring them to you. First proclamation for Earth Day 2019, whereas Earth Day is an opportunity to renew America's commitment to preserving and protecting the state of our environment through community service and responsible stewardship. And whereas the global theme for Earth Day 2019 is end plastic pollution, dedicated to the providing of information and inspiration needed to fundamentally change human attitude and behavior about plastics. And whereas on Earth Day, let's recognize the role that each of us play, excuse me, can play to increase awareness about the importance, importance of environmental education and spur progress towards global environmental and climate literacy. And whereas the city supports, through its Environmental Advisory Commission, development of educational and informational programs and materials that promote environmental awareness and behavior. And now therefore, I, David L. Brummel, Mayor of the City of Warrenville, do hereby proclaim April 22nd, 2019, as Earth Day in the City of Warrenville, and encourage all citizens to learn about the ways they can improve our environment. Arbor Day 2019, whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And now therefore, I, David L. Brummel, Mayor of the City of Warrenville, do hereby proclaim April 27th, 2019, as Arbor Day in the City of Warrenville. And I urge all citizens to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, and to attend Arbor Day celebration at the Warrenville Park District Recreation Center on Saturday, April 27th, 2019, beginning at 10:00 a.m. Further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the hearts and promote the well-being of present and future generations. Okay, on to the public hearing for the FY 2020 budget. May I have a motion then to go into public hearing? Alderman Wilson?
I make a motion to approve the agenda for...
To go into public hearing?
I'm sorry. Which?
One G.
Oh, one G. Make a motion to open the hearing for a public hearing on a fiscal year 2020 budget.
Second by Alderman Berry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, we have a roll call for that? Do we need a roll call? No. Okay, opposed? Motion carries. We are now in public.
You need a roll call. Okay.
You're welcome to hell, Alderman.
All right, voice vote appears to be good enough. And we have a unanimous voice vote, so I think we're good.
Okay.
All right, discussion. Where do we want to begin? John? City Administrator Cokely.
Thank you. Tonight is the, also on the agenda is the first reading of the Budget Ordinance. This is the public hearing that is required annually before the budget is adopted. There has, the budget was distributed and then publicly made available on the website. And we've had a number of meetings to discuss these items. Even preceding the distribution of the budget, the department heads, departments all presented their goals, objectives, successes for the current year, and their plans for the next year. We have the citywide work plan that lays out all the details of many of the large, multi-departmental projects that are going to be going on to the next year. And the budget workshop was held on the 16th of March, Saturday morning, that for the City Council, we had a couple of residents that attended. But we're here to answer any questions about the budget. If there's anyone, I don't know that anyone from the public has any right now. The Finance Director can fill in a couple of details or respond to questions. I don't know if he has anything prepared. He'd rather just wait for questions. So that, we'll leave it for anyone on the council, or if there is someone from the public, we'll answer the questions. Thank you.
Okay, we'll start with the Alderman. Alderman Bavir?
Yeah, I just, I'm in favor of the budget, but there's one item on there. The last few years, I voted no because the, the money I put aside in there for the gas station purchase, and that's what I'm against. But otherwise, the rest of the budget, it's fine.
Okay, thank you, Alderman. Alderman...
Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Alderman, would you repeat what you just said? I didn't catch that.
Just that I'll be against it and afford a budget, but there's one item, the purchase of the gas station.
Oh, thank you.
That I'm not in favor of.
Okay, Alderman Hoffman?
I'm also in favor of the budget, except for the, as far as the purchase of the property of the gas station there. And so I'll be voting no on the budget. Thank you.
Alderman Ashauer?
Same. I disagree with the purchase of the gas station property.
Okay. Alderman Goodman?
Yeah, I just wanted to talk a little bit about some of the adjustments to the fiscal year budget that we discussed at the budget workshop. And some of these were changes that were discussed, like the additional funding for a portion of Warrenville Road that's going to have to be rebuilt, an adjustment to the road program cost estimate, which is very substantial, and some very sizable expenditures in TIF 4 that are being added. So I guess my question about the Lexington Homes changes, was that something that we discussed at the budget workshop? And are these new estimates of what those costs are going to be? Because it's a million-dollar difference than what was in the budget document that we've looked at before. It's just a lot of money, and I wanted to talk about that.
Okay. Community and Economic Development Director Mensah?
The, the adjustments do reflect the monies that would be paid out under the redevelopment agreement. It's my recollection that when we were presenting the redevelopment agreement at the Community Development Committee, the whole meeting, we called attention to the matter that the then-proposed budget did not include those dollars. So there was an acknowledgement that as we move forward closer to approval, that we would have to include those dollars if that redevelopment agreement was approved by the City Council.
Okay. I mean, we certainly have talked a lot about the redevelopment agreement and what those expenses are going to be for. It's just a question of the timing, of when we had the numbers, when we had the approval, and when the budget document was made. That's the only...
That's correct.
...change here. Okay, all right. Just wanted some clarification. I know we've, we've talked about these things before, but it's important to be very open about what we're doing and why suddenly there's a million-dollar change to the budget. And it's just going to basically decrease the ending negative fund balance in TIF 4. It's not coming out of other funds as a, I mean, I, because I only see it here in an adjustment in TIF 4. I don't see it from any of the other funds that we're actually spending the money from. Because, is it because it's reimbursement and it's not being paid out until later?
Correct. All the, the interfund loans that help support the TIFs will cover the expenditures in the TIF, and those have to be brought before, before you to sort of re-up those and make sure that they're up to date. And we did discuss that during the budget meeting as well.
Yes, we did, but I just don't, if we didn't have the numbers in one place in the budget, then presumably we also didn't have it in the other place in the budget where the money's actually going to be coming from. So do we need to reflect that adjustment as well?
No, because money does not happen in the budget. Money happens in the background. Money is not a revenue or expense. It's actually an asset that's going to move from one fund to the other in the form of interfund loans. So you won't see, you won't see an interfund loan as a revenue or expense, which is what a budget is.
Okay, I think I'm following you. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Don't see anyone in the audience. So could I have a motion then to close, to close the public hearing? Alderman Wilson?
I make a motion to close the public hearing on the fiscal year 2020 budget.
Second. Motion and a second, and we'll do a roll call in honor of our clerk.
Alderman Hoffman?
No.
This is just to close the public hearing.
Yes. Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Bavir?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Okay, very good. We'll go on to citizens' comments. I don't see any citizens in attendance this evening, so we can move right to official and staff comments, beginning with the mayor. The first thing I want to do is call in our Finance Director, Dollstrand, because I believe he has an honor to share with us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have received notification from the Government Finance Officers Association that our 2018 CAREVER, our Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, is qualified for our 26th Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting.
That's... And those types of things don't happen by accident. They happen because of diligence and hard work and the integrity of our staff. Kevin, congratulations to you and your staff for, again, 26 years in a row. Pretty impressive. We do things by the book, very, very carefully by the book. So, thank you. That's all I have, except that tomorrow, of course, is Election Day. You have the option to stay home or go vote. I would hope that you'll elect that second option and show up at the polls if you haven't already. This is traditionally an off-year election, which means turnout is light, which means a very small percentage of the people who are eligible to vote will be making decisions about people who will sit up here for the next four years. Perhaps you'd like to have your voice heard in that, one way or the other. So tomorrow's your opportunity. Plenty of time, all day long. So, hope to see you there. Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. Also, tomorrow, voting, in the 18 years that I've been clerk, we've had, that I can remember, at least two times when it's been a tie for one of the offices. So to think that, oh, I'm going to stay home and my vote doesn't count is totally wrong. And this is a privilege that you have here in the United States and here in Warrenville. So please come out. It's going to be a beautiful day. Can't blame it on the weather. So please vote. It's, it is important. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Treasurer?
Freedom isn't free. Vote tomorrow.
Thank you. And Alderman? Alderman Davalos?
Couple things. I'd like to ask the clerk, if people don't know where to vote, where could they find that information?
They can call here at City Hall, and I'll either be in my office, or Josie will be, and, or go on the website for the DuPage County Board of Elections. And, and then put in your address, and it'll come up where you need to vote.
Thank you.
And you should have gotten a card in the mail at some point, too. So...
Yeah.
Several ways.
Thank you. I would also just like to piggyback on the proclamation for Arbor Day and encourage everybody, it's a Saturday, April 27th, to come out to the Park District. This is really a fun event. It's wonderful for kids. It's wonderful for adults. There's free food. There's people with all kinds of information, fun things to do. There are free trees. I have several trees in my yard that, one of them's up to seven feet. I have a five-footer and a six-footer that I got as little tiny trees at the Arbor Day, and now they're big trees. So Warrenville and Bloom is there, and they'll have their perennials again, I think. And they are auctioning off lots of things. I think our mayor made some ren houses today or yesterday that are going to be part of all of that. And there's contests, there's raffles, and so it's just a really fun couple of hours. I believe it begins, it starts at 10 to 12. And just encourage everybody to come out. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Goodman?
In thinking about the Arbor Day celebration, it really brought to mind a recent event in my own family, so I thought I'd mention it. On December 1st, this past winter, there were a series of tornadoes through central Illinois. And they hit a town called Taylorville pretty hard, where a lot of my family lives, including my grandmother. And my cousin was telling me this week that the 100-year-old trees that were all around his parents' neighborhood are all gone. You know, 500 homes were destroyed or seriously damaged by about 12 tornadoes. Very, very luckily, nobody was killed. But it's, it's just not the same without trees. And so for their Arbor Day celebration this year, they're going to be doing some planting. They're going to be doing their best to rebuild. And a lot of the homes there are under construction, but if anybody wants to help donate to the victims of these tornadoes, there is a charity called Missions for Taylorville, which you can send a donation to at the Taylorville City Hall. Look up the, the address online. Taylorville City Hall is organizing this. And they'll be hopefully helping these people rebuild and get a sense of normalcy back after some, some pretty bad destruction that changed the face of their, their town forever. So for our Arbor Day, maybe we can help them have a good Arbor Day. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Bavir?
Yeah, just wanted to make a note. Prayers go out to the Webb-Hudis family. Margie Hudis passed away, and it was the daughter of the former mayor here. And she was married to the Webb family, and just wanted to say prayers to her.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Ashauer?
Just a note of interest I had, Sunday I, we picked up Saturday's mail, and there was a check from Chris Ketcherubis as reimbursement for items that were stolen out of my truck about two and a half years ago. The, just want to compliment the police for identifying the suspect, and I don't know who actually was responsible for arresting him, but the process does work. And I just wanted to compliment everybody involved with that. It was an interesting note that you never hear about.
Thank you. Okay, City Administrator?
I don't have anything to add tonight. Thank you.
Okay, and City Attorney?
Nothing.
Very good. We'll move on to the approval of the agenda for this evening, once I would like to make that motion. Alderman Hoffman?
I'd like to take off 6B and 6C. Thank you.
Right, I can see it. I'm sorry, B and C, did you say?
Correct.
Anyone else wish to remove anything? Alderman Bavir?
Yeah, I wanted to remove A.
Okay, anyone else? Then could I have a motion for the agenda as amended? Alderman Wilson?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda for the April 1st, 2019 City Council Regular Meeting.
Second.
Okay, as amended, correct?
As amended.
Okay, very good. Motion and a second. May I have a roll call, please? Oh, no. All in favor?
Aye.
You got me thinking roll call now. Again, opposed? All right, we're good. We have some minutes to be approved. We're going to remove item 5C and bring them back at another time, so we would like a motion to approve A, B, and D. Alderman Wilson?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the March 16th, 2019 City Council Budget Workshop. Approve the minutes of the March 18th, 2019 City Council Regular Meeting. Approve the minutes of the March 25th, 2019 Public Safety and Finance Committee with a whole regular meeting.
Second.
Second by Alderman Davalos. Any discussion of those minutes? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The minutes are approved. The consent agenda for this evening as amended. Item 6D, accept Public Safety and Finance Committee recommendation, waive second reading and pass ordinance 02019-14, authorizing the disposal of city-owned property through an auction conducted by propertyroom.com. E, accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee recommendation and pass resolution R2019-11, approving an intergovernmental agreement with PACE to administer the Ride DuPage One Year Pilot Program beginning on April 25th, 2019. F, accept Public Safety and Finance Committee recommendation and pass resolution R2019-12, approving a lease agreement with Santander Leasing LLC and vehicle assignment with Midwest Transit Equipment Incorporated for the lease of a 2016 Dodge Enter van through April 2020. G, accept Public Safety and Finance Committee recommendation and pass resolution R2019-13, approving a contract with GovTemp USA for temporary contract planner assistance in an amount not to exceed $26,000. H, accept Public Safety and Finance Committee recommendation and leave the current signage and barricade in place at the intersection of Lakeview Drive and Barclay Avenue. I, accept Public Safety and Finance Committee recommendation and authorize the partial closure of Stafford Place for the annual bike rodeo on May 18th, 2019. J, accept Public Safety and Finance Committee recommendation and approve the request to solicit donations for the 14th Annual Bike Rodeo on May 18th, 2019. K, accept Public Safety and Finance Committee recommendation and approve change order WAR underscore CR underscore 001, extending the Dynamics 365 Project timeline to October 4th, 2019, and change order WAR underscore CR underscore 003, extending the Maisick City Project timeline to March 6th, 2020. L, accept Public Safety and Finance Committee recommendation, approve the additional 24 hours of Baker Group Process Development Consulting Services at a cost of $3,960, and authorize City Administrator to sign the change order. M, accept Mayor Brummel's recommendation and approve the reappointment of Jonathan Lockett to Ward 1 Plan Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals member, excuse me, with a term expiring April 10th, 2024. N, accept Mayor Brummel's recommendation and approve the reappointment of Robert Pebble to Ward 3 Plan Commissioner for a term expiring December 7th, 2020. O, accept Mayor Brummel's recommendation and approve the reappointment of Andrew White to Ward 2 Plan Commissioner for a term expiring November 16th, 2020. P, receive and file the 2018 Annual Report for the Tourism and Arts Commission. Q, receive and file the 2018 Annual Report for the Plan Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals. R, receive and file the 2018 Annual Report for the Bicycleist and Pedestrian Advisory Commission. S, receive and file minutes of the Bicycleist and Pedestrian Advisory Commission Regular Meeting of February 12th, 2019. T, receive and file minutes of the Environmental Advisory Commission Regular Meeting of February 13th, 2019. U, receive and file minutes of the Tourism and Arts Commission Regular Meeting of January 17th, 2019. V, receive and file report of invoices paid up to March 27th, 2019 in the amount of $67,802.23. And W, authorize expenditure for invoices due on or before April 15th, 2019, in the amount of $176,132.32. Alderman Wilson?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as reported.
Second.
Second by Alderman Davalos. Roll call, please.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Bavir?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Hoffman?
Aye.
Thank you. The consent agenda as amended, has been approved. We returned to the three items that were taken off the consent agenda. Item 6A, would someone like to make that motion, please? Alderman Goodman?
I move to offer the first reading of ordinance O 2019-11, adopting the City of Warrenville Fiscal Year 2020 Municipal Budget.
Second by Alderman Berry. Discussion. Okay, I guess we already had some commentary. We can just go to Alderman Bavir?
Yeah, there's, I brought up my discussion on the former thing. I think everybody did, so we just need a vote.
Yeah, I was going to do that. All right, roll call, please.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman? Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Hoffman?
No.
Alderman Bavir?
Nay.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Nay.
And Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye also, so motion carries. On to item 6B. Would someone like to make that motion, please? Alderman Goodman?
I'll make a motion to accept the Plan Commission recommendation, waive the second reading, and pass ordinance O-2019-12, approving a special use permit for a planned unit development and a final plat of subdivision for the Lexington Trace Town Home Subdivision south and west of the Route 59 and Route 56 intersection.
Okay.
Second by Alderman Berry. Discussion? Alderman Hoffman?
Yeah, I'd be voting no on this just because I'm, I'm against, I'm not for TIFs, and I'm definitely not for residential in TIFs. So I'll be voting no on this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, may I have another roll call, please? Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Hoffman?
No.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Bavir?
Aye.
Thank you, Emily. Motion carries. On to item 6C. Would someone like to make that motion, please? Alderman Goodman?
I'll make a motion to accept the Community Development Committee recommendation, waive the second reading, and pass ordinance O-2019-13, approving a redevelopment agreement between the City of Warrenville and Lexington Trace LLC.
Second by Alderman Berry. Discussion again. Alderman Hoffman?
There again, I don't think residential should be in TIF zones. I'm not for TIFs the way their statute is written right now, and that would be one of the changes I would make, would not be residential in the TIF zone. So I'll be voting no on this. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Alderman Davalos?
Yeah, I just want to make a discussion from last meeting, when we approved the TIF agreement for this development. And one of the reasons, one of the reasons that I think it passed, I voted yes, most people voted yes. And I understand Alderman Hoffman's concerns, but we voted, we got, as they negotiated the TIF agreement, what we got, what the city got in the end, bottom line was a lot of infrastructure. Water, sewer, road, sidewalk, I mean, lots of things, mostly the water and sewer that we want to have, and in the end, this developer will be reimbursing us for that money. And so it's, it's one of the positive things about a TIF, because I don't know how we would get water and sewer into that area without help. Because I think the only way, if we had to do it, we'd have to ask taxpayers for money or dip into other funds that wouldn't be paid back. And, I mean, it's one of the beautiful things about a TIF, for, for a community like ours that just isn't overflowing in millions of dollars of extra funds to put these things into the community that we need. So I just think it's, it was a clear example last week when we voted, how beneficial in this one area that, that a TIF can be.
Okay. Seeing no further discussion, may I have a roll call, please? Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Hoffman?
No.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Bavir?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Motion carries. Welcome to Warrenville. And a special thank you to staff. I know this was an incredibly complex and difficult agreement to come to, to get this fine development for Warrenville, and I know you put a lot of time and effort into it. And great developer, great development, and thank you so much for that extra effort. Okay, nothing under regular agenda, nothing under unfinished business, nothing under new business. We do, however, have a couple citations for discussion in executive session. So if I may have a motion with those citations, please, Alderman Bavir?
I'd like to make a motion to go into closed session for the purpose of 5ILCS120/2, paren C, paren C2, collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees. And 5ILCS120/2, paren C, paren C1, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body, to determine its validity.
Second.
Second by Alderman Bavir. Roll call, please. Alderman Hoffman?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Bavir?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?